Oh, my God. Everyone-
He didn't know the words. Mister Irish Catholic priest didn't know Danny Boy.
Alright, does everyone have their mics on?
No, I didn't pass it around too much. I didn't tell too many. He's a good guy.
You wanna turn that mic on, my friend?
Are you ready?
I am ready. Good? Alright, seven o'clock. Let us call this meeting to order if you all want to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the leg of the United States of America. Between the Republic, which stands one nation, underground, and visible, and which being just strong.
Alright, let's start with the approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections?
I don't have one.
Motion to approve the agenda, Chris?
Sorry.
Alright, motion by Mike, second by Andy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass four oh. Alright, consent agenda.
Okay, a tasker of the Minister on last meeting, March twenty-second, and we have the receivables. We also have the three-year comparison for the golf course. Your cash balance report ends up last Friday. And then we have the bills for city payments. I'm just gonna point out a couple. Actually, Andrea, do you wanna come up? Do you have that on the same page?
Yep. Um, for the bills, the ones we are going to point out, there were a couple two menards that totaled about twenty-six hundred. There were supplies throughout at the golf course. Um, there was one to Banning and Data Systems. That is our software here, so that's for our annual support. That was about twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, this round, we are paying workman's comp to the League of Minnesota Cities. That totaled about forty-seven thousand. And then the last one there was to the Seacoast County, some assessment rolls for the street project and any nuisances that we had to file with the county last year along with some county fees that totaled about four thousand. Otherwise, everything else was routine in nature.
So that was the reason for the increase in expenses then for golf course this month? On the purchase?
Um, that, and there's a lot of like merchandise sales and clothing sales that have gone through now that they're open.
Gotcha.
Those types of things.
Makes sense.
And I just, I do wanna point out the workers' compensation invoice. Um, that's usually due in the spring of every year. That's what we've worked out with the League of Minnesota Cities. So maybe December I assess information and then it just takes a few months to get the influx of figures and tell like based on payroll and things like that. So that's kind of a routine bill every sprint. And this one I gave at the time of the fashion. Last meeting.
Yeah.
Alright. Any other discussion on the consent agenda?
I wanna point out that golf courses are starting to be starting out. We had a really good last year. We're starting to get on that.
Yeah.
It's a good start.
I think it was like seven point six nine times greater in revenue than la- from last year already. It was like, I was really excited. I mean, both February and March were really doing amazing. Alright, we can move forward to public forum. Anyone here to speak in public? No? Oh, motion!
I'll motion.
I'll second a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Alright, motion by Jim, second by Mike. All in favor? Um, pass four oh. Now, public forum. Anyone here to speak on public forum? Alright.
John, for your one one five last question, just curious to see how much we need to the city save by having cityways all down here versus curbside?
About a third of the price it normally was.
Probably was.
That's what we're gonna ask when we all have the plan bill. I'm guessing it'll be about a third of what it is.
And that would be approximately how much?
Um, I believe the bill three years ago is like sixteen, seventeen thousand. And this year, we're hoping it'll be, you know, six or seven. In there. That's what I'm guessing.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on public forum? No one else? Alright, we will close public forum at seven oh five PM. Notices and communications.
Don't test.
Nothing tonight. Alright, move on to council reports.
Utility met tonight. Mostly notification thing. Most, when you purchase, or any, mostly informational thing, I think. Ackert, Nate? Okay.
Alright.
I don't have much either, but I don't know. The, the golf course deck is instructions underway ahead today. We got a lot on Saturday.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
How, what is the timeframe on that again?
Uh, well, their goal is to have it done by the Monday, or Tuesday, next Tuesday for the first night of, so I don't believe it's-
That's exciting!
So, I don't know if they'll, I don't know if they have the, all the right railing stuff that they need right now, but-
Sure.
It's, uh, it's coming.
That's awesome.
Matt, go to four this week?
I believe so.
Alright.
But I don't know what weather is. I don't know what weather is.
It's up in the air. Well, that's exciting. I'm really anxious to see it all finished. Any other council reports? One? Alright. We'll move on to administrator reports.
Alright, the task in your packet is the mark recommendations to the bank or bank statement for the law. We also have the cash balance report as of last Friday. Um, in front of you are, is your copy of our new city code books. As you remember, a meeting or two ago, we had a public hearing. We amended a portion of the code. So these are your written books in that, in that binder. I would encourage you to read it two or three or four times, 'cause on Tuesday morning at nine, we're gonna have a pop with- Everything in the city code.
I have a doctor's order under the sixty.
Yeah. Um, okay, the D two are on Highway sixty. As we stayed at our last meeting, we looked at that map at our last meeting. That is scheduled to begin this Thursday for your registration.
I did have a question on the Highway sixty. Did someone reach out to me and was wondering about policing? And I think we kinda touched on it, that they were gonna gauge how much enforcement they may or may not need in the first couple weeks? That, okay, perfect.
Our police chief is already, you know, talking with the Sheriff's Department, things like that.
Right, okay. I'll touch base with them then.
Yep. Um, while Wednesday through Friday of this week, I will be working from home. I'll be on a little quarantine. I got a doctor's appointment on Monday. So I would be available by phone and email Wednesday through Friday. And don't call me on Monday, 'cause I'm not gonna answer. Exactly on Tuesday the twenty. And then the last item I have is the agreement from the Coalition from last Friday. Have an update on the legislative pathway marks, things like that, so you can read through that. And that's all I have for administrator reports.
Alright. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Alright.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Andy, second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, pass four oh. Department head reports.
Not much action for us. I don't think so. Real size, but we've got some on our house to prepare. Get started on the past three projects on the location. We have the situation.
Yeah?
I have a more, we discussed that later. Um, still waiting on bid for our CIP, for our early schedule for this year. Hopefully, we'll have something to report soon, um, in that aspect. And the basketball patch plan should get run in early next week. Hopefully, we'll get a match. Talking ourselves.
Okay.
Joe, I'm not sure you're the person that asks this question, but with the four street project, when do they plan? When they plan to come back and finish the whole art?
I haven't heard. They should be doing a walkthrough. We hope you're in a few weeks, so they'll be getting, looking at the list and updating it.
It's early with the weather, but they said, looks like it's grassy and planted.
You're not the only four street resident that's receiving questions, sir.
I receive them all the time.
If you can call it grass, that's a plant. Hmm. Any other department head reports? No? Alright. We will move on to old business.
Yes.
You're up.
Do we know how many people, uh, shoulders it?
I had eight residents.
Eight?
Yes.
Excellent.
We have total eight residents in the community garden. Excellent. And if you're okay, do you have an update for us?
I do. I do. Um, you got the, uh-
Yep.
The applications and the waiver, or the rules or regulations last month.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like several things from the council this, this month. I did measure out there by north of the nursing home. And we can put twelve plots, twenty by twenty, between the building and the well. And we'll stay back thirty to forty feet from both of those structures. And that's about thirty feet, maybe forty feet off of that minimum access road. So I do believe we could probably put a dozen, and that's twenty by twenty plots and a five-foot walkway or, or grassway between each of the plots, so they're physically separated. I just put some flags out there today just to designate the large out, out range of the, so, total, uh, area of the garden. So, if we're going to move forward, uh, I need several things from the council. First of all, I need authority to organize the garden. I need to know whether you want a committee, or to bring people in, or you want me to just run it through the council. I need, it's, I have to hold this, by the way. Uh, make sure that we're under the city insurance. Uh, how we are going to sign the lots. And I'm suggesting first come, first served. And as they come in, the applications will be numbered one, two, three, four, five. Number one will get selection of whichever lot they want first. Number two and so forth. Uh, size of the plots, I'm hoping twenty by twenty is adequate. And they can get multiple lots. But we will take all applications first, and then I believe the person can go back and get a second lot. Um, I need authorization to be able to use the city property, the location, or the nursing home. And then if we want, I want to know whether we wanna search out sponsors or an organization. So, the last thing then is the money that we would collect. Does it run through the city books? Do I set up a separate account at the bank? And this is a separate entity? I believe being a council project, we should probably wanna run it through the city in some way, shape, or form. But I can or, I can organize all that, once we get authority to move forward. So, now I've done my spiel, the council can discuss it and decide what they want.
I think we can take care of most of your comments or concerns, sir, but two, one motion with us. Um, I think a motion would go ahead and make you the committee of one to take care of it.
With, with the stipulation that the city, uh, will be backing that with the insurance and liability and-
Yes, because we made a motion through the city, I assume it will-
Yes.
I think it's, it's sort of the, sort of liability church.
And the location is acceptable?
Staff, over. Location?
Hi, Dave. So I think we should both put a little bit of your deck in place, just to make sure.
Yeah, and I can, I can move it where however Joe needs us to adapt. I think we're, we can work together pretty easily. I really love the north of the nursing home. It's the best part.
And then that gives you authorization to most of your other questions.
And most of the other questions can be dealt with by committee or management. Yep.
Can I just have one, I have one suggestion, Jim? The rules or regulations, one hundred ten. I know this might sound trivial, but do we wanna put somewhere in there that the, the individual at the spot is responsible for meeting and watering? I know the meeting is there, but I didn't see it there. I'm not required to water. Right. But some of these community gardens in some communities, they have a statement available that we don't care. Uh, do you wanna number four, or do you wanna separate thing for water?
All plots will be maintained and waited regularly, at least weekly.
Including watering for something you're supposed to-
And we can put something in, uh-
Water is a, a residence discretion. And the only reason I say that is because it almost guarantees someone's in a call here, so, so it's a water, it's like crap, you do the best that you can.
Next question. Can you put something in there about, has sites or sites, because you might have some people who don't like the, we've been, we've been there with, you might want to, you know, care about, the description there and all restrictions or arbitration or, you know, that kind of stuff.
And I think some communities would just, I, uh, right under handle that, because I'm not going to be there twenty-four seven. And if they use that, it's by someone else, that's true, so that's their fault.
Okay, so you wanna say the city doesn't control that, or, so it's, uh, you have to get, get followed by it? I think, I follow what you're saying.
No, I, I don't give a-
Oh, I'm sorry. So do you wanna put something in that says, maybe that the city would make neutral on that you do, or so that it's clear, if it, you don't have, you're not gonna orchestrate these people about, that's why you're putting organic gardening?
I don't wanna deal with this. The city, if they violate and they, and they make people do any pre-ludal address at the test point, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a-
Okay, so kind of on a stay on your own spot?
But, that's why we have the five-foot bucket.
Right.
It's really, it was, they have to all be purposeful to have anything strict for than five feet. And they're not using a big twenty-foot bowl on that.
And would he go towards, and the fee goes towards-
Towards, uh, the-
The insurance?
The signage?
Oh, I got you.
Any laborers that the city would have?
Yes.
And it's a possibility, we may have some money left over that's the ice, and we could maybe get some old bricks the next year. Something of that sort. That's my concept.
Would you accept donations of poles and shovels and-
Why do you do it? I wouldn't be open to that. Actually, I would be thankful for that.
How about a little, a shed? I'll call you.
Ah, it's great. And I would be receptive.
Any other, any other council discussion on the community garden? Start it.
You're comfortable going ahead with that by yourself?
I am. Actually, with a lot of tiller.
I've seen that. Heard of it. I've seen it today, actually. Like, do you want?
Oh, you did take a motion. Okay, you have a motion on the floor from Mike. Do you have a second?
So I have that you made a motion that Jim will be the committee of one to take care of the community garden, um, along with after staff reviewing where flags are, that the liability and authorization of land is okay.
I don't think it's reasonable. Hold on.
Alright, you have a motion and second on the floor by Mike and Andy, the calling paper?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Alright, new business.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You said thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Most welcome. I took a bottom on this, pretty easy.
Alright, looks like our first is the administrative lot split on September night, North Market.
Um, I could give the tasker word in eighteen seconds for Marty, cause it'll help as well. So, do you wanna put Marty?
Um, neighbor to the west to buy it about fifty, about one hundred foot parcel of the Banning and North Street from his neighbor to the north, south of Long, sorry. And he wants to, he actually runs a metal gravitation building system. And it's a correct garage, please want to set up a little detached garage to, to put in there. So he can park his garage, getting through acquisition of this, seems to be able to need to set back.
That's one of the funding.
And according to the city code, this is in a, in a restricted lot split between your properties, and we do not need, you know, public hearings, supply reviews, and things like that. This is the, it's restricted lot split. But everything's in order, and I read too, that it's a, like, it's a, a, a very easy thing for us to say. I will, well, thanks for the motion.
Alright, you have a motion on the floor for resolution twenty twenty-one, there's no six, three with seconds.
So.
Alright, motion by Jim, second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you to Marty for going through, also, that works and research on that.
Thank you. Those are easy ones. Uh, I have a number two. Golf cart use policy in my mind.
Okay, this is really easy. The, the golf cart use policy has not changed. This is what the city council had adopted a few years back. The only thing we are changing in the ordinance is we are mentioning that provision of the city code is chapter seventy point zero seven zero. We renumbered it as we read, organized our city code last, last fall. So this resolution is the exact same as the, as the spend, we're just updating the number in that line of three there. So a resolution would adopt this policy as compared to this. Thank you.
Motion on the floor, but Andy, do we have a second?
I second.
Alright, I guess I can, all the papers?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so, and I have bids for more.
Okay, we have a couple bids here in your packet. Um, we kinda organized it this way. If you look at the two sheets that have your quotes, the letters A represents similar mowers and their, their price estimates of their quotes. Item B that I have on the screen is technically, basically, the mower that staff is looking for. Did I say that right, Joe? They have all thirty thousand dollars less. So if we could, uh, use our, our public works, our discreet parking capital reserve or this purchase, we can do that with the money of that holding there. Joe was here. They have any questions that you may have. And then we have kind of party, conversation, and we'll get to the second.
Yeah, yeah, what we're recommending is the ground master's empty two tackle, which is a hundred inch zero term mower. We have one currently, um, in the fleet, and we really like it. We have a very good model that's, that's a vessel worth in purchase. We have an older Jacobson, or the six-foot deck that we could be selling.
It's not a current, that's question for, for matter of school.
It's scheduled this year for purchase.
Right.
Long-term plan, correct?
Well, you have, I don't have any, so.
Hey, do you, do you want to, do you wanna talk about the stone stuff, between eight and twelve? Are you in the middle?
What do you have?
Do you have more to add to your presentation about the stone wall stuff?
There's a part B.
I, that's what Joe said. We can talk about that if you want. Doesn't matter.
Is this set up? Will it set up? Give I guess, for stone wall, I guess, it's, it's-
Yes, it will be approximately, approximately additional, I think, twenty-four thousand. This is what we've, uh, we have, uh, we have cap. Actually, it, there's a set of tracks to hold on to it. And that's where I wanna discuss with you, um, sidewalks and the city in the future and such. I think that would be something you'd be interested in, that we would do that in-house, or I can talk to a contractor who would, give where to go that way, um, give us a quote or lot, or whatever, whatever we'd be looking for.
Thing would be more feasible.
What's that?
What would be more feasible?
Um, yeah.
Manpower is my, my question.
The manpower?
I mean, it, it backs up a lot of the, it backs up, uh, you know, other things that
you feel.
Right, I mean, we'd use it for other things as well, ice rink. It could be done, we could do it. It's just a matter of, it's hard to say how much contractors and costs, you know, compared to what we're sold.
And you deal with all the expenses?
Well, the cost of the price for contractors, I'm taking that on the, the rest of it. I don't know.
What's your opinion?
It's more, it's more equipment to maintain this. But if it may get used in other places, that's not, it's do it. Do you have other uses for it?
We would, yeah. Like I said, uh, like the ice rinks, our equipment's almost too heavy to take down there. It ends up doing more damage than, than it does good. Um, that's just one aspect. We could use it on the cemetery, there's not a lot of their materials, but, uh, you can utilize up there. But Joe, like I said, it's, it's a pass to go into a contractor's, so-
What company do you feel, what's that? A couple of our sidewalks, our sidewalk.
Easy or, yes.
Your company, you can be able to get it done, though, with your people.
I think we can.
What's the, what's the replacement time line on this? It's ten years long.
Um, I'll probably say five to seven.
I'm just curious, are they worth twenty-five thousand dollars for five to seven years of, of use?
And yeah, we'll get, um, I mean, we could give prices to, from contractors. We're not decided on that tonight, but just so we get the conversation going, you know, before we get a, made up for direction before it's all, again, so.
I think I can just wait on this a little more. I give some bids, see what people charge, and probably file them there. Yeah, I think I got a rate on this.
So thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars is, was it all, I'm doing some quick math here.
Yeah, the list was kinda messy there. It'd be the number one, the seventy-two ten go deck for twenty-four, nine twenty-three, the one hundred inch, we're discharged deck for twelve, four, four. Uh, and, uh, seat, and the, uh- See, the puller track cap, the puller track kit, that's all stone equipment. Just a more, and I have a little board as well, just so we see what we have.
It's still, it's deeper, than I thought.
Yep.
I'll make one, just a little over, first of, from that, more, see. That'd be, and, and, yes.
Yeah, I got it, I got it, I'm down the pole. Yeah, it could be a thousand nine hundred and seventeen, that, that's, that's, that's.
Okay, alright, we have a motion on the floor by Andy, second by Jim. All in favor?
Aye. And then, it's my understanding, we'll work on contractor discussions, if, if we need, if we're not secure.
Yeah, I'll, and then, and then, Steve, you have the other uses, right? That, that's a little relevant, especially a couple of sidewalks, we've talked about it, and, and, we're gonna be, uh, uh, all they use, items like that, we'll use it for quite a few things throughout, since that, that's about twenty-five thousand, and we have, we're gonna send forty-five thousand dollars a year on that mower. And I got, we're gonna do it for a hundred dollars an hour. But the individual contractor may make a few dollars. So, so let's keep our distance.
Okay, we'll talk about that when we're, when we're rolling.
Let's just, let's just, let's, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll be, I don't know. How about the lot? Do you have a rate for that lot?
No.
No, I, I don't, I'm putting it, but I, yeah. But that's what I like to set up, uh, the prime rate, so we have, in September.
What idea?
For the lot, July.
We gotta be anticipating in September, we have a market anyway. Alright.
All right.
No, it's a lot, but, uh, it's, so, you have, I don't know, it's, uh, what, uh, are they, it's going, what, they're snowing, what?
No, it's not, it's not, it's, that would probably come out of reserve, that would come out of reserve, yeah.
Do you have any motions to adjourn?
No, won't.
Motion by Jim, second by Andy, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
I know, now for a minute, seven thirty P M.